Okay, the time is 5:30. I'd like to call this meeting of the Palm Springs Public Library Board of Library Trustees to order, please. Can we have a roll call, Jeanne?
Sure. Craig Borba.
Present.
Harry Courtright is absent. David Kelly.
I'm here.
Ed McBride.
Present.
Kathy Wormick.
Present.
Thank you. Change to the agenda. Auditions. Do you need to read that or do you want me to talk about what I asked about?
No, you go ahead.
Okay, so based on our last meeting, Craig and Jeanne got together and reformatted our agenda process. So at the end of this meeting, we'll talk about that. But I just wanted to draw light to thank them for putting some work into this. And at the end, we'll give some feedback and tweak it if we need to and see how well it goes in running our meeting. So thank you guys for doing that. Anything else from you, Jeanne?
No.
On that? And the agenda was posted?
Right. The agenda was posted as required.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments? Okay. The consent agenda consists of the minutes, the statistics, and donations. And I'm assuming that because it is a consent agenda, we're going to vote and approve all of these things at once? Or did we plus the new process or the pleasure of the board?
Craig can probably talk about this more.
We can pull any item off for discussion, otherwise we would approve what's...
You might pull your microphone closer to you. Oh. Please turn off your cell phone. So Craig, I'm sorry, just a second. So Craig helped with this agenda draft to and pulled this from RAP?
We pulled it from three or four different organizations, just to see how their board agendas look.
Mm-hmm.
And we're hoping that this addresses many of our needs here, but also we can make any changes as you see fit.
So my experience at City Council is this is where we decide if we want to pull something off for later discussion and add it to one of the future sections, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so does anyone want to do that at this point?
Well, I think probably 4B and 4C probably need to be pulled because I don't know if there's a report in the packet about those items. Is there a report that needs to be?
We just got a handout.
Yes, I just...
Or if it's in the package, then there probably is intended to be a discussion about those items, I would imagine.
Yeah, and I can talk about this document that was handed out to you, which will be added to our board packet archive. This is a, this was suggested that maybe we report on donations to the trust fund or the library. And we could talk about that, about what you want to see. Do you want to see the donations? Do we want the people's names? Do we want the amounts? I don't think we should have their personal information, their addresses, or anything like that. But did you, you want to just call all these out and then talk about them or?
So are we moving to move 4B and 4C down to discussion items? Is that what we're asking?
Can I move then for A, make a motion that we approves the minutes, since we've got two of them as discussion items?
I'll second that.
I have a question. So going forward, since a consent calendar is opposed to just go for consent, I'm wondering about the necessity to have a motion on A if we, if all we're doing is pulling items B and C from the consent calendar.
You always move, at least from my experience under Robert's rules, if you have a consent calendar, you still have to approve it, the items in the consent calendar.
So that's what I would, I assume the motion to B is approve the items in the consent calendar as opposed to approving the minutes?
No, no, no. If you approve, if you've pulled two of the items, they have to be discussed and approved separately. So usually what you do is you move the items that are in the consent calendar that you can consent to, and then you take up the other two items.
So in the case that there are, let's say, three items that are not under consideration for discussion?
Right.
Then you would want to have a motion on those separate items or all three of those items?
What you usually do is move the consent calendar, except the items that have been pulled from it.
Okay, so I would amend, ask a friendly amendment to your motion to say that the consent calendar is approved with the exception of items B and C, which are pulled from the agenda.
And that's my motion. Thank you.
Okay.
So we, can we, let's restate that so that, do you mind restarting with that?
Yeah, the, my motion would be to move the consent calendar with the exception of items 4B and 4C, which have been pulled from the calendar.
Okay. And we have a second from Craig?
Correct.
All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So we're going to move 4B, 4C to, down to seven for discussion and possible action items.
You could do it right now.
Do it right now.
Do it right now.
So let's, library statistics.
Okay.
Is this time for your, was this your presentation?
No, the information that was in your packet, the comparisons and whatnot, I intended that to be on 7C for your library annual report and questions of further discussion.
Okay.
You want to talk about that then or?
So the library statistics is the standard package that we get every month, correct?
Yeah.
All right, so...
And this is our first time doing this, so of course we'll work out the hiccups and make sure it runs smoother.
So if you do that in the future, we do it up here and you don't do it down below, so.
So the library statistics would be just your standard report?
Right.
That's on, I'm sorry, on page eight of your packet with the door count and the items checked out. Just our monthly statistical report.
Gotcha. These are two different things because she has a presentation about statistics statewide and where we rank, which is part of her 7C.
Right, you all wanted to talk about that for a few different months and talk about different things. And so I took some of the numbers and ran some comparisons and put some in your packet. But then I did some further analysis and I wanted to show you so that you just don't have the numbers. You have more of per capita usage and cost per hour and things like that with actual calculations.
So I follow you then.
But while we're, if we're going to do this, you've pulled the items, so you have questions on it or you want a full presentation?
Well, I think in this case, probably what we should do is just have the presentation of the library statistics in part of that agenda item. So I think, you know, I'm anticipating that going forward, since the library statistics have always been part of the package, that unless there is going to be an agenda item to discuss them, then maybe ordinarily we'll just... Approve them, right.
So since these were pulled this time and we're talking about the packet?
Right.
Were there specific questions from you or anyone else about these or can we?
I defer until that discussion on the agenda.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it was a little bit confusing because we had, we have statistics and we have statistics.
Yeah, it's our new, new time in this agenda.
Yeah.
All right, so we're going to, we're going to hold this discussion until after your 7C discussion.
Mm-hmm, okay, good.
Perfect, okay? And the other item would be the donations to the library. Jeanne, can you talk to us about that?
We, it was suggested that we do something to bring awareness to the fact that we do receive donations. And I created this sheet, and these are actually the only donations we received this year to the trust fund from individuals or groups. We received a $25 donation, which we get a donation from this family every year around the holidays. And we got a $100 donation. And then we received a $100 gift from Alpha Delta Kappa. And we tend to receive a gift from them every year, and they prefer that that money be spent on children's anything, children's materials, children's services. So that is why it's been earmarked for children. There was also a suggestion that maybe we want to highlight the gifts that the Friends of the Library give to us each year, which I didn't have time to compile, but we could list out the gifts that they give us, which this year are over $200,000 worth of gifts to the library. Wasn't specifically to the trust fund, but you...
To the library.
To the library, you know, and so I think that might be something really nice to emphasize because it does make an impact on us in a positive way. It's very helpful.
So, all right, because my question for the board is, when we asked for this, was our intention to get it to the trust fund or to the library as a whole to review these? Or both?
I would say in my mind, either or. It's good publicity for the donors and I think we should be doing that.
Okay.
So to either organization, either to the trust fund or to the library, so.
Okay.
Did anyone ask the trust fund whether or not they wanted us to actually publicize that here?
Oh, the Friends.
The Friends, I'm sorry.
Their meeting is next week, so I haven't really had a chance to talk to them.
I would ask them, get their input.
Yeah.
But I think generally if they're okay with it being noted, it's a, it's a good thing. And I would think we don't normally need to discuss it, but just to know that it's happened. Do you, are they sent thank yous or does something happen?
Mm-hmm, yeah, every donation that goes into the trust fund gets a thank you letter. And if it's a gift in honor of someone, the other, the honoree gets a letter as well. And the Friends, when the Friends of the Library receive gifts, they send thank you letters to or grants. And it is kind of complicated. We could go into the weeds on listing all of the donations to the library because we do receive grants, but those go to the Friends. So the Friends receive grant funds. And so we could just, we could be all reporting a lot of information. And it's great information, but I don't know how much you want.
Yeah, you know what, honestly, I don't, I don't want to feel like we're micromanaging the Friends. And to have them report to us on a monthly basis, I think is a little excessive. I think significant gifts would probably be fine. And I think, and I don't know how they might feel about this, but I think in the same spirit that we ask the foundation to make a presentation about their annual report, maybe we could be asking them to make a presentation about their annual report as well.
Well, let me ask you this too, because it sounds like I'm hearing two different things. Gifts from the Friends to the library or gifts to the Friends from individuals or groups?
No, no, I don't want to micromanage their business. I'm just saying Friends to the library.
Yeah, like if they pay for the fish pond or if they buy us chairs or...
Patch our roof.
Yeah, I think it's good to know, to know that.
Yeah.
And it could just be cumulative. It could be once a year. I mean, however you want to do it.
I mean, if they do it in their annual report already, I don't know what, I, I don't know.
I'm not sure. They put that in their annual report. They do create an annual report for their Friends members.
Yeah.
But I don't know.
I don't think it really gets really financial.
But it just, it would be nice just to know what they're doing.
Right. And typically, we do, we do our request of them once a year. And once or twice, we've had two separate instances where we've, they've approved gifts so we could report a big batch of gifts all at once.
To the library?
Yes, yes. Like they paid, they paid a large gift of eBooks and that was an example of something.
Great example. So going forward, we're going to add this report of donations made to the library from individuals as well as Friends. And I think we should add the foundation because that's going to come eventually, so.
Right. And so the document, I think the, the goal of the document would be that it would just be in your packet, nothing really to discuss.
Like statistics.
Just to, you just see it, it's in there. And then we could have the information roll off once a year. You know, if it's a January request, the next January that would roll off? Or that you want all this information to accumulate into one big document or do?
I was thinking, just for the publicity for the organizations or individuals that are giving, that it stay on for a year and then rolls off. I don't think we're going to fill more than a page. It'd be great if we did.
I think the Friends will fill more than, fill a page.
Yeah, they will.
We, we have about, I don't know, 20 gifts that they give us.
But I think it's good for the community to know the impact that the Friends is having, the positive impact on the library.
Well, I'll work on it and see what it looks like, and then we can, we could decide if...
Bring it next meeting.
And then you don't have to report on it either. It's just here.
In the consent.
And it's in the consent and it doesn't have to be discussed unless somebody wants to.
Wants to highlight a particular, I could see us wanting to highlight maybe a particular gift to put in our minutes that this is a substantial gift and thank you for doing it. And then we would pull it off the consent kind of and talk about it, right?
You could still leave it on the consent and raise that to a point.
I could mention it in my library staff report, or you could talk about it in trustee comments too, without having to remove it from consent. It's just you're receiving that that item's in your packet. And then later during trustee comments, you could say, hey, I just wanted to emphasize that we got a $25,000 gift from blah, blah.
Well, this is a good start. Let's roll with it one more time, see what it looks like. If you can gather the Friends gifts and so we have an example of what those look like. And then let's discuss it next time and see what we want to do to tweak it, so.
Yeah.
All right.
Good idea.
So should we have a motion to accept this as part of the agenda now or is this, it was on the consent, we pulled it off?
So a motion, I make a motion to accept item 4C.
Just a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Moving to number five, administrative reports. Friends of the Public Library.
Hi, I will report for the Friends today. The Friends completed three Modernism events during Modernism Week, very successful. We're actually still compiling all the data, so I don't have numbers for you yet. But they did sell out on their house tour. The lecture was well attended and the exhibit was a really great success. So definitely they're going to be going forward with a version of that next year. Is there hope? They do have their annual book sale coming up in March. That is March 13th through the 15th. The first day is members only, but you could buy a membership at the door, and that's from noon to 4:00. And Saturday is open to everyone, to the public, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And then Sunday is from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and that is their bag sale. Well, everything you can put in a bag is a set price, and that's open to everyone. And that's in the fray building across the parking lot from the library. And then the final thing is that the Friends Annual Meeting will be on Sunday, March 3rd at the Smoke Tree.
March 3rd, May 3rd.
Thank you, May 3rd. Yes, March is already packed.
That's today, isn't it? Yesterday.
Too many Ms. May 3rd because it's going to be held at the Smoke Tree Disney Hall. And so you do have to be a member of the Friends in order to attend, so join now and come to the annual meeting. It will quickly fill up. They have a limited space, so when they announce it, it'll be first come, first served. They haven't opened up seating yet, but they will very soon, so. Oh, did they? Oh, oh, March 1st, see? All right, well, so seating is now available if you want to become a member and try to go. So that's everything for the Friends.
So we have to RSVP, right?
You do online.
Register online.
All right, I'll do that.
At friendsofthepalmspringslibrary.org. Thank you.
And if you're not a member, it's an easy $20 annual fee.
I'm a member twice, so.
Well, great. Bring your friends.
Need to write myself a note here. Thank you. Is there a report from the Library Foundation or do we want to put that with the Library Foundation Annual Report? Is that okay?
Yes.
Staff?
Hello. So, thank you all for being here. Our first evening program, program, it's not a...
Meeting.
It's great. It's so weird. It's the wrong, it's the wrong day, it's the wrong time, but it's all good. I think it's a great, great idea. Bob Woodward is our final event this season for Palm Springs Speaks. It's this Friday, March 6th. Tickets are almost sold out, so get your tickets now, palmspringspeaks.org. And it's going to be a really timely event right after Super Tuesday.
Yeah.
And eager to hear what Bob Woodward has to say. Our passport program has been going successfully for an entire month. February was our first month. We had 38 passports processed and 27 photos. The photo money goes to the Friends of the Library and the passport money goes to the city. And we're seeing lots of children. So we've got evening hours for families and Saturday hours for passports. And it's a really simple process, and we encourage you to make an appointment right on our library website. There's a big link for passports, palmspringslibrary.org. We have a lot of really great programs coming up this spring. Just check our website and our brochure, which is coming soon, soon, soon. Some really good programs. Maybe Julie can highlight a couple. Some really good programs, maybe Julie can highlight a couple in a minute. We are, as a city, taking precautions to stop the spread of germs. We want to make sure everybody's healthy, and washes their hands. So, please wash your hands, and cover your coughs, and don't touch your face. We do have hand sanitizer and wipes out at our service desks and our public computer room. We are washing our children's toys, which we do things regularly, we, this is not new, but we're washing the children's toys, washing the tables and chairs, service counters, door handles. We're just wanting to make sure that everybody stays healthy, and we do remind everyone to wash your hands. Wash your hands. And we have a wonderful exhibit, it's on its way out the door. St. Teresa's Sixth Graders have their Modernism exhibit at the library. They're adorable, very well crafted. They're, they're leaving this week, so last chance to see them, hurry, hurry, hurry. They're really cute, but every year, they're really cute, and we're just so impressed with the, with the models. And they're, they're large models of historic buildings around town. Career Online High School, our, our high school diploma program, we invite people to sign up to get your high school diploma. There's no cost to you. Our Friends of the Library sponsors this, and we receive a grant from the California State Library to sponsor the scholarships. We've had three graduates, so three people have received their high school diplomas at the public library. We have 10 active students, and we have 11 openings for, for adults in the Coachella Valley, who are ages 19 and over, who need to get their high school diploma. It's completely online, and they have an academic coach, and it's an accredited high school program. And then, once you complete that program, you can jump right into College of the Desert through their high school diploma pro, they have a program, trying to think of the name of it, but, eh, eh. It's a program where high school students and those who get their diplomas can immediately go to community college at no cost, for the first year at least. So, look into that, if you are graduating from high school, go to COD. Our teen librarian, Sean Corbin, and the library is receiving a Shiny Apple Award from the Palm Springs Unified School District next Tuesday, the 10th. Sean did some outreach with some of the school students, and they were very pleased with, with our efforts, and nominated us for a Shiny Apple Award.
Wonderful.
So, we're very proud of that. Also, on March 10th, we have Drag Queen Story Hour, 6 o'clock, Bella de Ball. Come out, all are welcome, adults, children, families. We welcome everybody to come. It's a wonderful program, our theme is spring. The One PS Neighborhood Picnic is Saturday, March 21st. The Friends and the foundation are participating. We invite you to attend. All the residents in Palm Springs get to attend, free and get free lunch. Yes, it's true. Desert Regional Medical Center, NICU, is having their, their 30th Annual Reunion of children who have graduated from the NICU, the Neonatal Intensive Care Unit. And our library staff will be participating, we'll have a booth at that event. It's a really cute program. And 30, they've had the NICU at Desert Regional for 30 years, so there could be 30-year-olds attending this reunion.
Whoa.
It's a fun program, we've done it before. It's a great way to reach out to families who got off to a rocky start, you know, their premies, or, or sick babies. Family Fun Fest is coming up during spring break, it is April 8th. I'm telling you now, because it's April 8th, and it'll be here before you know it. From 10 to 12, it's a free event. We have community organizations that come out and set up booths, and we'll be in this Palm Springs Stadium. And we're going to give away books, and promote our summer reading program, which is coming. And it's a fun day, wonderful, wonderful thing for families to do, April 8th. They're going to be gone, your family's going to be gone.
No, they're here.
Oh, good.
We're here, not going anywhere.
Family Fun Fest, it's so fun. It's good for children and teens, we have teen component, too. And then, save the date for Palm Springs Comic Con, which is an officially sanctioned comic convention of the San Diego Comic Con. It is Saturday, May 9th, from 10 to 2. And then, a couple of exhibits and things that we need to mention, and Julie jump into and add some things if I forgot. But we have a PS Modcom exhibit called Southern California Cool, Southern California Cool Living, and it ends March 7th. Get in there now to see that one. And then we have a photo exhibit, artist Taylor Mikkel has, her exhibit is called A Round at Palm Springs. It ends March 28th, it's beautiful. And then we have the American Documentary Film Festival, Sneak Peak, March 25th. We will be showing some, is it just one film?
For the Sneak Peak, yes.
Sneak Peak, 10:30, 2 o'clock, and 6 o'clock. So, it's a repeated program, free of charge. And then later, we'll do a Best of the Fest type of a thing. And then, Julie, do you have other events? What about the CBD and the pets?
Yeah, so, the Palm Springs Cultural Center, last year, did a cannabis film festival and lecture series, but they really wanted to expand it and make it more focused on education. So, they came to us, and we're partnering with them to present some lectures at the library this year, in continuation of that. So, the first will be on April 1st. A doctor from Eisenhower Health, Dr. Jonathan Betchard, is going to be talking about CBD for pain relief, and what science says. And then, a couple of weeks later, we're going to be having a lecture on April 15th, Veterinary Cannabis 101, The Basics for Your Pet. And we have a specialist who is certified as a veterinary cannabis counselor coming over from LA to do that lecture with us. And so, you know, it kind of gives different perspectives on that topic, since it's around all of us all the time, and we need to become more educated on it. So, we are excited to be partnering with the Cultural Center to present those lectures at the library.
That's all we have.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff?
I have one. It's just, has the city given you protocols yet about what to do if somebody happens to be infected, and they come to the library?
No, but we, the city's having a press conference tomorrow with health, health officials, and so, they want to assure everyone that we're prepared, but definitely, I would, we would take precautions and...
It just seems that would be good.
We would report that.
It'd be good that you have some planning in place.
And we've already, we've been taking precautions, and, and we've got hand san, like I said, hand sanitizer out everywhere, wipes, we are wiping things.
Has, has the cleaning schedule increased, like in the bathrooms?
I'm not aware of anything at this time, but...
They're just...
We're, I know the city is very aware, and wants to make sure that everyone is, is healthy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Treasurers' report.
Well, in your packet, I think it's a little further on down, it has a Page 9, I think, at the top, top right-hand corner, kind of close to the staple, where you have your cash account. And that is not very much unchanged from the last time, it's $1,009,43,999.47. And I don't have any other report other than that. Perhaps later on, we'll have a discussion about the trust fund generally, but I don't have anything to really report on that at this point.
All right, so can we have a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
I'll move.
Second, please.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, so now, we're up to our discussion items, and our first item is the annual Library Foundation report. We have the president of the foundation, Mr. David Sidley. You want to come forward?
Sure. Do you want me to sit at the table?
Please, join us.
And just turn on your microphone.
Introduce yourself, if you don't mind, and turn the microphone on, and...
Okay, my name's David Sidley, I'm the president of the Palm Springs Public Library Foundation. I am here to present our annual report. I'm, think, the best thing for me to do is probably just kind of go through it generally, rather than read you the entire report.
Thank you.
The first thing to note is that we have grown the board to 15 members, from, I think, a low of three or four a year and a half ago. The most important things, I think, are the financial part of this report. We have repaid to date $10,000 of the loan we borrowed. The note, we are aware that the note is due this July, and I'll address it in the next section. Based on our strategic plan, we do have some big goals coming up, in order to create a healthy infrastructure and a strong infrastructure to ultimately fulfill our goal of helping the city build a new library. We would like to hire some staff, secure office space, and that's going to cost us some money. And then also, we are going to do an annual fund beginning this year, and we have kind of an ambitious goal to raise $50,000. And we need to, obviously, to invest in that, to solicit the funds, and then ultimately prepare for our capital campaign, which will be, you know, a major fundraising event. The dates and costs for that are going to be determined on what, you know, once we know what the city wants to do, for sure. We would like to request that the trustees consider forgiving the loan that, that we've already borrowed, and actually, we'd like for an additional grant. And, you know, I, I wrote this, and I, I'm tempted to just read it. The foundation and the Board of Trustees obviously have the same common interest of, of keeping the library really strong. And because, over the last five years, this project has kind of stopped and started, the foundation has kind of stopped and started. We have not stopped since I started, and, like I said, we're growing. We have an ultimate goal, to grow the board to 24 people by the end of the year. We're pretty close, we've developed a really strong matrix and nominating committee for getting those people. We do have approximately $87,000 of the original loan, and if you add that to the $10,000, we've really only spent $3,000 since we've had the loan for, for five years. So, we certainly aren't frivolous or careless with that money. We are significantly more organized now, and we did engage Library Strategies, and we do have a 36-month development plan, and I brought a couple copies here, if anybody wants one. So, the foundation has been really busy rebuilding itself, and we have been quite successful in that effort. We've met several times with Library Strategies, and some of the highlights of our, of our, our new plan are, we formed, like I said, a nominating committee. In late 2019, we did hire three quite really qualified people to join the board. We're still actively recruiting new members. Now, you know, it, it used to be totally honest with you, it used to be that if you want to be on the board, you could be on the board. We have, we've changed that, they go through two interviews, they have to meet the criteria in our matrix, where, you know, we want people that fulfill the needs of the, of the foundation. We formed a finance committee that's headed by someone who has quite a bit of experience in finances, and we want to develop an infrastructure so that we can accept these big donations. We've also elected some new officers to the board. Our new treasurer, David Engen, has gone back and kind of forensically put together the pieces of the puzzle of where that money is. And it's not like we, we, we always knew where it was, we just didn't know exactly what we were doing with it. Now we do. Our foundation, the, the financial house is in order. Our secretary has, has gone through the minutes, and we've updated our bylaws. And, so that's kind of the, the basic, foundation is in place. And we have done some community events. We, we sponsored a reception for the Legacy Wall at the Palm Springs Public Library, and we did that in an effort to foster goodwill between us and the Friends, and also to get our name out there. We gave away a couple of, actually, not a couple, 10 magazine subscriptions, we had a drawing for children. And it, it was at Christmas time?
Yeah, the Santa event, we had a drawing for magazine subscriptions, and, and families could sign up to enter to win that. And it was clearly sponsored by the Library Foundation.
Yep. And we, like Jeannie said earlier, we are going to participate this year in the, the One PS Picnic and Expo. We're really excited about that. We're hoping that everybody on the foundation board will be there, and we have some giveaways. And we are going to try and get a couple hundred names for our mailing list by having a drawing for prizes. And we are currently working with a PR firm called Buzz Factory on an awareness and branding campaign. We have requested a proposal from them for increased public awareness, so that the public knows what we're doing. And we, they are going to, they're really an instrumental part of the organization in helping us, you know, be in a position to solicit major gifts moving forward. So, we are really ready to begin the next phase of fundraising, and to secure funds for the new library, and we're really excited, and I think we have a really great board that's energized and excited and happy to be there. I don't think we have any dead weight, or any dead beats on the board. And it's a really exciting time. And I think that's all I have. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
So, before us right now, you are asking us tonight, two very important questions. The first one is, and I don't know how, I, I think, I came across this, this note just the other day in my files, so I brought it with me. Anyone wants to see the original note that we agreed to for the $100,000?
The loan, yes.
Yeah, for the loan. You're asking us to, first of all, forgive that.
Yes.
One thing in business.
Yep.
In addition, you're asking for additional funds.
Yes.
So, can you, can you talk to us a little bit about that budget for what these funds will be used for, on your Page 2? Do you mind elaborating a little more on that, and telling us how the money will be used?
I don't mind. The foundation sees itself as a major part of the, the new library. In order to raise $10 million, we're going to have to have a really firm footing on the ground, and an organization that is able to accept that. And it can't be done by a group of part-time volunteers. We're going to need to hire a full-time executive director, we're going to need an office, we're going to need a lot of stuff, and, you know, to be able to do that, we're going to need to turn into a real foundation. We're going to need, so, we need that money to do that. We estimate that we'll be, at the most, $85,000 to hire staff for the first year. And that's, that's the high end. We, we likely will be able to get away with a part-time person, and, and a smaller office space. And then, in order to, to do the annual fund, you know, we, we need to create that campaign, we need to mail out the letters, we need, you know, there's a lot of stuff we have to do, and we're going to need a lot of money to do that. I mean, we need to spend money to make money. I hate to use that cliche, but it's true.
What, what, what is the, talking about awareness, I know that the foundation has had at least one public affair long, years ago, right?
Yep, yep.
What's the discussion about that now? I mean, is there any plans for any events, or anything that would also be seen as a fundraiser, that would also help you raise money to do these things?
We, the long-range plan is to have an event similar to that every year, like a, a major event, like a gala at Smoke Tree, hopefully.
Okay.
And then, several things along, you know, each year. And, and we're going to hire a consultant to help us with that, too. To help us come up with a fundraising plan.
Sure.
So, um, thank you for your presentation. I want to get a sense from you as to what you feel the history of the foundation has been vis-à-vis the trustees. Neither of us have been here in this position very long. And from my perspective, I actually think of the foundation as kind of like an extension of the Board of Trustees, because I really believe that the Board of Trustees and its members have some fiduciary responsibility to do fundraising on its own. And actually, I think that probably, at some point, there was some thought by the members of the Board of Trustees that they didn't want to do it themselves, and they wanted to farm out the work. So, it seemed as if the, the Friends of the Palm Springs Library were probably approached first, and they said they were happy with doing small-dollar donations. first, and they said they were happy with doing small-dollar donations. But to do the big-dollar donations, they thought they might need a foundation or another group. So in my opinion, I think that that was really the founding of the foundation. So that was, what, five years ago, because the note is at least five years old? So I'm kind of interested, when you've been recruiting people and you've been describing to them what the mission of the group has been over the past five years, how would you describe it now?
How would I describe what we've done in the past now, or what we're going to do now?
Both. I mean, how do you reconcile the past with what you're going to do in the future?
I am probably too honest. I'm a very honest person, and I tell them the truth. I tell them exactly what happened. That the foundation was formed and more or less floundered for several years and without a clear direction, because we were getting, I mean, there wasn't clear direction from the city. I mean, I, you know, the foundation was formed to raise funds to build a new library, but we were a little bit ahead of the, you know, the horse was ahead of the cart, the cart was ahead of the horse. You know, we didn't know what we were doing, or we didn't know why we were raising the money. But now that we do, you know, we have a really clear idea where we're going. So in recruiting new members, I tell them, I tell them that.
But I'm thinking, though, as the president of this foundation, and probably you would model this group on other large fundraising campaigns for other libraries. I assume you've been actually doing some research about what's been going on in the rest of the world. So I would think that probably large libraries, or any library for that matter, if they're looking for large value donations, they're probably actively fundraising whether or not there is a new building plan or not.
Right.
So my kind of, I mean, I understand what you're saying in terms of, now that we have a plan, but that plan has actually, in the last year, kind of morphed. It was kind of really on a fast track when it seemed as if there was an opportunity to put a new library in a new location. And that got a building committee started to actually get the, you know, a gauge of the temperature for the community for doing that. But there have been, and I'm sure you've been following the building committee, what had happened over the summer, there have been successive plans for many years to actually change this library. And over that period of time, there were plenty of opportunities to actually build a foundation and to raise big-dollar money. But nobody has done that. So my, when I, there's a couple of things that come to mind when I think about the foundation right now. One is that, yes, it's had a choppy track record. And you're getting to the point where you want to change things. And there's still a need to actually raise big-dollar money. But when I think of the role of the foundation, of the Board of Trustees at this point, I start to wonder whether or not we should be taking on the role of the foundation and being more active in raising funds from big-money donors. Or should we find, you know, another organization to do it for us? Because, in fact, if your organization was the Board of Trustees' admission or desire to actually farm that out to somebody else, then I would probably say, okay, we farmed it out to this organization, did it work? Is there somewhere else we could farm it out to, or do we need to take it back ourselves? So in light of that, I would almost want the foundation to actually make a presentation to the Board of Trustees that's more in line with, this is why you should still hire us. And I know I've taken up a lot of time, so I'm going to defer to somebody else.
Kathy?
I probably want to know a little more from Ed as to roles foundations have played. What, actually, I've been aware of some of what you're doing in terms of recruiting members. Some of the people that you have on it are people that we would want in the community raising money. I think before we talk about, and I'm open to forgiving the loan, I think that's appropriate, but I would like a budget, I'd like your plan, I'd like a bit more before we do this. I, you know, this is, especially before we spend more money, we certainly, I think, have freed you up to use that money to hire somebody to get going. And I think the second part of it, which is something that we're going to discuss later, is that we did get authority to begin to move forward on a contract with Library Strategies to begin to do the programming for the new library. So we know, we will end up knowing what we need in the way of a building footprint, beginning to get some sense of dollars. I'm sure you need all of that to actually raise money, unless your strategy is to raise money for the existing library, which isn't a bad thing. I mean, it would be probably hard to raise money to fix air conditioning or bathrooms, but...
Not very glamorous.
The stuff we need isn't glamorous right now. We've got great staff, we just, we have a building that doesn't work. But, but I'd like to see a little more from you. I don't, I don't know as much of, I don't necessarily think that being the fundraisers is the function of this board because we're so tied to the city, and that, and because we're tied to the city, everything that we do has to go through City Council. I think the advantage of having a freestanding foundation is that you can do things without going through the city. So I'm, and because of the Brown Act, we can only have two members of us working with you, although people might be able to do things and be at meetings or whatever. But I'd just like to see a bit more from you.
Okay.
And I want to make sure that as we start going through the programming with Library Strategies, that you guys are somehow tied into that so that you're aware of it and that some of the fundraising starts, can be funneled into that effort. City is also open to engaging somebody to do the park plan, the strategic plan, and work on what the library should be. So I don't think we're, I think the meeting Ed and I had was productive. I don't think we're dead in terms of moving forward. I think we actually are moving forward. And I appreciate everything that you've been doing, but I do think we want, you know, I'd like to see what your program is with Library Strategies. If you need to hire somebody, maybe we do that at the next meeting, because if you have candidates, you're going to have to get, you're going to have to know, know what you're doing. And five years of a loan where we had no security, and we've had it with you, if there's things you can, you can spend it on that will actually raise money, I'm perfectly willing, if you get those things going on the board, from a board point of view, to forgiving that first loan. Giving additional money might be, that's really tied to performance.
That makes sense.
Craig?
Yes. First, I have to disclose, I am a member of the foundation, in case everybody's concerned about that. I do want to thank you for your leadership. I was on the organization just before you became president, and you've moved it greatly, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I think what you're asking to be forgiven is really ninety thousand dollars and not a hundred thousand, since you've already paid back ten thousand.
Right.
So talk about that for a second here. I'm leaning towards it to be forgiven, but I'm also looking at it to be delayed, because I'd like you to come back with a tighter budget on how you're going to use that money.
Okay.
I'm also concerned that the city needs to give you a little bit more direction, or us a little bit more direction, on where we're going. Because when you're going out asking for people for money, they want to know what's going to happen to that money. So if we want to postpone, I think there, this is due in July, and if we want, I'd be in favor of postponing that July date to later in the year. That'll also give you time to develop a budget. I don't think you have any expenditures right now, but you do have eighty-seven thousand dollars that you still have access to. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So you could do some of the things that you've listed here with that eighty-seven thousand dollars. But again, I'd like to see a tighter budget, and again, thank you for your work.
Do you have a postponement date?
Oh, my God, my postponement date has to do with the city giving us some direction, but I would say at least going to maybe October, November.
Okay, so, if I may, I'd like you to also consider an idea of whether or not it would help the foundation if, in fact, it was the manager of the entire trust. So that the entire two million dollars that we're managing would actually be in the trust, because, I mean, in your foundation. Because I think ultimately, the purposes for what we have the trust for right now are going to be largely going to go towards a larger campaign, capital campaign for the library. And I wonder whether or not having those assets under management in the foundation would actually improve the ability for the foundation to operate. And I think it would render moot this issue of extending notes or extending, you know, creating more financial work for us as far as the foundation's concerned. So I'd like you to consider that. And as far as the note itself, it's a legal document. I think, Jeannie, you might have to actually ask somebody in City Hall whether or not we just kind of sit on it and just let it go, and that's okay, or whether or not you might actually have to pay it down, and then we'd have to re-extend the note for a shorter period of time.
Like I said, I have the note here. Have you seen this?
I have a copy of it.
The answer to those questions might be in here.
I don't think so. And usually, notes have a definitive date, and unless it says a revolving note or something like that, it's...
We could certainly ask the city attorney for advice.
I think you need to ask somebody in the city about that legal document. Because honestly, I, you know, a foundation having a note that's in arrears doesn't sound very good.
Correct.
And you might have to actually have your accountant report to somebody that we were holding a note that was in arrears for a period of time.
Yeah.
And that's not a good idea for a foundation.
Yeah.
Oh, and one other comment while I've got the stage here. If this is a document that you want to actually give to other people, I think you need to amend it to say that David Engen is the treasurer, not Greg Borba.
Yeah. Page one.
Page one.
Oh, wow, okay. I've proved read this so many times. Thank you for catching that.
The report ends June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen.
Well, this one actually says for the coming, upcoming year, and that's not true. So I, you know, whatever you need to do for this part is fine.
So you may want to change that June thirtieth.
Yeah, thank you so much.
So I don't think I disagree with anything that my colleagues have brought up tonight. What I, what I'm deeming from this is a chargeback to the foundation that I think it's probably time to schedule a meeting with the executive board of the foundation, with city representatives to say, you know, we're busily forming, we're engaging the community, which is really critical. We're bringing, as you can see, lots of community leaders into the foundation. We need an idea of what is the plan, so that you can start marrying up to that plan and getting at least an idea of what obligations the foundation is going to have in the future. Second of all, I see no reason, I agree with David, that even though you're kind of in this wait mode, with the board being reinforced the way it is, and with the people on this board, it might be time to say that we're going to start raising funds for a library endowment that would be there regardless if we have a building. And this is funds that conceivably someday may eclipse the trust fund, but to start raising that endowment for the future of the library and programs, so that might be what, start soon. I mean, there's no reason why you can't start raising money. You can go out to the public and say, we've established this endowment for working, of course, with library staff, to have a special collection, or whatever that endowment purpose might be, and I think the community will engage with that and start helping you raise money. And I guess, finally, before we consider the request, I think what we're hearing here is that the foundation needs to come back with a much more detailed budget.
Yep.
I think your consultants could help you with that if they need to. And by the way, you probably have an idea, but bring that budget back and then talk to us about, you know, what is your short-term, long-term goals here? And, you know, how would you use the money? How would you take the money if you were to get it and turn it into this endowment, or whatever that might be, to kind of show the community and show us that you're ready to rock and roll? I have to say, I will disclose, too, I do sit on the board. You have done a tremendous job in getting it organized. I mean, I remember we pulled together four people, and we were breathing, and we became officers in order to keep it live. So when I look at this list of people who have, in the community, have committed to serving and how excited they are, at the last meeting, it really felt like a foundation board meeting. I wish all of you could have been there, because we had such high-level discussions about the things we're talking about today. Adding a financial person, I know you're interviewing an attorney, and the people that represent so many different aspects of our community are sitting around this table and more, right? So we're beginning to have those discussions about what's next. So I think it's timely, and I think that your presentation should highlight that. You know, what, I don't know if those, I know some of you know Michael Hudson. Michael Hudson chairs the nominating committee, and the consultants recommended to us, for example, to create what are the skills and talents you need on this board. You're right, there was a time, if you were breathing, we put you on the board, because we needed the bodies. Now, that's not true. I mean, we are looking for an attorney, we looked for someone with a financial background, you know, for the finance committee. We've looked for people who manage volunteers, we, all those things, we're beginning to check off our list, and community leaders who are saying, I'm here, I'm really ready to help make this a reality. So I think that it's the right direction. I think we just did a little more on that presentation.
Okay.
That's my feedback on the report.
I have some questions related to the office space issue. The fray building, has that been put on hold now?
Yes.
Yes, it has.
Yeah, pending the full park review.
Yes.
They're going to look at it during that time.
And is there any space that you're aware of that would be available for?
We've given the foundation a shelf for their envelopes.
As a star.
We're very amenable, and we have given them a portion of a shelf. So space is tight at the library, as you all know, and so we would do what we could, but an actual office is not, the friends of the library, been existence over forty years, don't have an office. They have a little book-sorting nook with a filing cabinet.
And I'm just hoping maybe you can go back to the membership of the foundation, because there are some people listed there that might have access to space.
Right.
And actually, Buzz Factory, just, they, now they have that whole building, and they have a kind of a co-working space, and I'm thinking of maybe, they may be able to donate something to us.
That'd be a great in-kind donation type of thing.
The chamber has space, too. You know, it might be worth having a conversation with the chamber.
Can I just go jump in for a second?
Absolutely.
I don't think at this point handing over the money that the trustees are holding is fiscally responsible. I do think that's just possibly a future discussion. I do think that money is pretty much earmarked for the newer revised building. I could be wrong about that, but I, but I...
You mean the trust fund?
Yeah, the trust fund. That, that's... That suggestion seems a little broad, but a budget and a fundraiser, a real fundraising plan, we're at start, we feel like you guys are starting something.
Yeah.
And I love the idea of doing an endowment that could be used for the new building, or it could be an endowment for needs of the library.
And that could definitely be something I would personally consider, you know, the trust fund being a funding source to get it kicked off. I mean, I think that, you know, in my experience in fundraising, you've got to have money to make money.
Yep.
And, you know, by the way, you guys should know that the board voted that if you're to sit on the board, you have to give a personal gift to the foundation. So, because that way, when we're out in the community and we're talking about the library, we can all say that, you know, we've given a personal commitment. But I think that, you know, starting with, let's seed money, an endowment, makes perfect sense for you to come back and ask. So I think in your budget, in your presentation, that would be a great start, because you can say to the community, the trust fund has started this, and we want to, you know, blow it out, here's our goal, short-term, long-term, so.
And maybe a two-year budget.
Yeah. I don't think there'd be an issue, knowing where you are right now.
Yeah.
And then come back to the, you know, but I do think it's time to have that executive board meeting with the city, for lots of reasons. I remember having a discussion last year, where we talked about establishing the agreement between the foundation and the city on how to give money to the city when it's raised. We don't have that right now. You know, if one of you would like to write a check for five million dollars tonight, the foundation would be happy to take it, but they have no way of giving it to the city or to the library. There's no agreement that allows them to do that, which needs to be worked on. And Dr. Reddy admitted that does need to be worked on sooner rather than later. So it's probably time to put that on the list of things to do.
And we need also, like, the technical stuff, like naming rights. I mean, if somebody wants-
Correct. So it needs to start on that.
We've got to be able to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think the trustees want to be involved in that. I agree with trustee Kelly that I think that the extension of the foundation from the trustees, it's definitely something when we're out in the community, we represent the library just like the foundation does, so I think there's got to be that connection and awareness. I think, I will say that I don't think we need to go look for an organization, because we have one, we just need to get it up and running, and empower it to do this job for us, before we say, you know, your pass or fail. Anything else from the trustees? Any questions for David? So when do we want to have this follow-up?
You tell me.
Do we want to have it at the May, because I know you're not here for next month, are you? Do we want to have it for our May meeting? Does that give enough time for you to go back? When's the next meeting with the foundation?
Next Thursday.
Okay. Would you guys like to hear back from them in May?
Do you need more time?
I think we could, May seems reasonable, because that'll be, if that loan's going to be called due in July, that'll give us sixty days to scramble if we have to.
Okay.
And who's going to handle the note with the city attorney, to look at what we can do with it?
Do you want me to reach out to the city attorney?
We should maybe schedule a meeting together.
Let's do that.
Okay.
Please include me on that meeting.
Good idea.
And we'll look at the options. I mean, I don't, there's no need for us, for you, the foundation, to pay us money, and then we're going to turn around and give you money back. I mean, you know, that would be my discussion with the city attorney, is, you know, how can we modify this note, or whatever we need to do, so.
Well, modifying the note's the same difference, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
All right, getting back to our agenda, building committee update. Library director.
Sure. At the February 27th city council meeting, the, there was a staff report request for approval of agreements to proceed with the, the actual title of the staff report item was, the item on the agenda was approval of agreements to proceed with conceptual planning for the Sunrise Park master plan and redevelopment of the Palm Springs Public Library. There were two components of this. One was the, to amend the current agreement with library strategies to continue their process for phase two, which would be visioning and building program services. And then there was another component with Rios Clemente Hale Studios to work on a Sunrise Park master plan. The city, the staff pulled the Sunrise Park master plan portion, and said, we want to bring that back at a later time. So the city council approved the amendment to the library strategies agreement, so that we could continue with the building program.
And they made one change, which is, in the building committee, some of the line staff of the library would be included in that committee for planning and programming for what the new library would be. We had a meeting with David Reddy and Marcus Fuller, Jeannie and Ed and I, and the reason, one of the reasons they pulled the Rios Clemente wasn't that they don't want to do it, because they want to do it. They wanted to take what we have here, in terms of their scope of services, and more finely detail it, so that they have some sense of what the cost of the various items are. I asked Marcus, when I talked with him, and I talked with him today, to make sure that there's an integration of their work with library services and the building committee in the work they're doing here. Because when I read through the scope of work, it was, it's interesting, and I think, I don't know if everybody has it, and if we want to send any comments back, but one thing that it didn't do was identify working with library services. And we anticipate that those will go together. I don't think we have to have this approved today, because in some ways, the work with library services has to start first. And so, does anybody want me to go through what the scope was with them, or?
For the Rios?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I was, when I first read it, I thought, too, that it wasn't as detailed as I've seen.
Yeah.
So what were some of the details they're asking?
Well, they're asking, they're asking-
Is this a document that we have?
Yes. Oh, it's a document that Jeannie sent to you. I don't think it was part of this packet. Didn't you send it out to everybody that it was going to the city council?
It's in the city council staff report on the city council's website. But it's being revised, so.
It wasn't sent out?
No, I don't, I don't think I sent it to you.
Is it possible for you just to send out the city council report to everybody here, so at least you have it?
Sure. I can pull it up right now if you want.
Well, it doesn't exclude you from discussing it, does it?
No. So what, what they had in, in the document with library services, one question I have for you is, is there a contract that we're executing? Has it been executed? And when do we start work with them?
With library strategies.
Strategies.
Okay. It's my understanding that, right, that contract was approved.
Yeah, it was. We just need to do a change order for the project and with the procurement and contracting department. I just inquired today to ask, do we just need to do the change order, and then, or are there additional contracting requirements that we have to do? I think that's all that we have to do.
Because it was an extension of the current-
And they'll check, they'll check their, you know, they'll check all the things that they normally do. So there's a little process to get this going, but we'll work on that.
It would be, I think, to keep, and one of the reasons Ed and I went to that meeting was to keep the momentum going on this. So getting that contract executed, or the changes executed, I think are important, and maybe having an initial meeting or discussion with library strategies to look at exactly how this is going to flow. I also asked Marcus, because it envisions there being a building committee, obviously that building committee does not need to be the same people who were on the last building committee, but would be more geared toward people that would assist with some of the programming issues and the outreach with the programming. So I think that's also something that we should be proposing, is a potential building committee of people to work on this. In terms of the Rios work, let me just run through what they were supposed to do under this contract. Review the existing planning and programming documents, and I would think that's both for the park and the library. That needs to be spelled out, that it's both. Turn and review existing park and library, and it should be buildings. Conduct interviews with key city stakeholders. Programs opportunities. Perform code and ADA review, including internal standards or sustainability. Review base plan and site analysis. Provide library case study comparisons. Prepare park case study comparisons. Prepare conceptual narratives for the library and park options. Prepare character and precedent words. Prepare two concept option with library strategies. What Marcus said is what they envisioned was a six-thousand-foot overview of what the costs would be, a square foot cost on renovation, a square foot cost on programming, and looking at the building footprint to see if it could be revised, so that the programming could be included, we need a new library. And I'm kind of assuming they will do also the other things that the building committee talked about, which is, what's the overview for the park, and how would the park have to be reconfigured in the uses, so that it would be successful? But that's, I think, working on this a little more is really important, so that we have a good sense of what they're going to do, and what, and also that library strategies looks at this, and if there are things they want them to do that aren't in this, it should be included now.
When do they expect us to come back?
They hadn't looked, they hadn't talked with Rios Clemente Hale. He had originally said it would come back to the next city council meeting, which would be next Thursday, but it's Wednesday. City packets have to go out on Thursday, and they haven't had any discussions with the principals, so I would think it's, there's a little bit of time.
When you talk about the park, are they talking about their other, the other partners that are there? Mizele, Boys and Girls Club?
Yeah.
Palm Springs Power?
It's Mizele, Boys and Girls Club, Palm Springs Power, the stadium that's there, and the uses that, what the issue was, was how do you recreate the park so that it works, so that people feel safe at the library, so that the uses integrate?
And the parks and rec department, and the pavilion, the swim center, the skate park.
Right, all of those things. All of those, integrating them, and also dealing with the parking nightmare that is the park. So they've got a bigger charge with the park, but the first charge is also to try and figure out how the library would fit into a reconfigured park. I think that's fair, isn't it?
Yes. So at the next meeting, Jeannie, do you think you would be able to update us on where we are with library strategies, and what's going to be the next steps for their next phase?
Sure, definitely.
Okay.
Or maybe get that executed and have them meet with us?
Yeah, we'll, we'll work on that.
Perfect.
Between now and then.
The good news is we're still moving. Which, which you guys may recall, we had a discussion about that, I think, the meeting before this last one, where we were concerned that the strategic planning document or process might delay the library. But clearly, we're rolling, so that's good news.
And we just need to keep rolling on it.
Absolutely. We've got momentum. Any other questions about this report, or where we are with this? Thank you, Kathy. Library annual reports, the library director wants to talk to us a little bit about what she's uncovered in the wealth of databases of library stats.
Well, I know that you all had requested that for a few months, we talk about the memo that trustee Kelly wrote, and so I thought that it would be interesting to analyze some statistics and do some comparison. And so I included some information in your packet, but then I further researched and did math, and I wanted to talk to you about it and show it to you on the screen, so I hope that you'll indulge me, and I hope that that's interesting to you, and that this is something that you want to see. Okay. See you in a moment, too. Okay. So in your, in your packet, I gave you a list of libraries that we compared, but this handout is more current and more relevant today. I think that you should look at this handout that is separate from their board packet, because I added in some per capita comparisons, percentages, and things like that. So I would refer you to this handout with the green stripes on it. The Palm Springs Public Library Statistical Comparison Based on Population. So one of the things that our state library does is they compile statistics of all the jurisdictions in California. County library systems, public libraries, special GPA, they're, they're basically public libraries. And so we do get compared to county libraries and city libraries, but the way that they arrange the spreadsheet can be manipulated in many different ways. So what I did was, I referred back to what our consultant had done in 2012, Linda Demers. She had done some comparisons, which are in your board packet. And there were some 2012 numbers listed in there. Hold on.
Yeah, this one.
When I turned it sideways, that's where I couldn't find it.
That one, right?
Yes.
This one right here with the blue and yellow?
Yeah, so feel free to look at that, too. Oh, on page nineteen of your packet, so. So what she did was, she sorted the library jurisdictions by population, which is what I've also done. And so I included basically the same libraries and a couple of more. So you can find statistics for all public libraries at this website, ca-countingopinions.com. It is through the California State Library. You could download it in Excel, you can sort by any category, budget, staffing, number of programs, you name it. And then, so what I did was, I did a comparison based on the populations roughly forty-six thousand to fifty-three thousand, and we're kind of right in the middle, forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and six is our population. Our service area is humongous compared to the ones that we are compared to, which I'll show you in the next slide. Most of the cities are about a six to ten square mile service area. We are at one hundred and six square miles. We are quite large. That's right, right? Julie does the statistics, she knows them like the back of her hand. The libraries that I compared were San Bruno, El Centro, Lincoln, Covina, Azusa, Cerritos, Glendora, Altadena, Beaumont. Because they're nearby, their population's a little bit higher than ours. And then I included Rancho Mirage. Rancho Mirage is completely out of, out of range of our population, but they are our neighbor. And so their population is only eighteen thousand, seven hundred, and you could see on this slide on the screen where we lay in comparison of population. So our nearest population neighbor is El Centro, but it's, in some ways, it's hard to compare us to them, but in other ways, they're doing so much better than us in some things, and so it's confused, it's just, there we are. And then I also included the averages of these benchmarks. So it's ten libraries. I did not include Rancho Mirage in the average. I just separated them out, completely separate, just, hey, look at this. So our, the number of borrowers that we have, we have twenty-three thou, this, oh, and these statistics are from 2017 to 2018, because this is the most current information that is on that website. So it's a little dated, but it's- So it's a little, a little dated, but it's still very relevant to do some comparisons. We have 23,000 library cardholders. When you compare that to our population of 47,000, it's 0.48 per capita, so about half. I know not all of our borrowers live in Palm Springs proper, but we have about half of our population as a library cardholder. And the average, the benchmark, the average of this group of compared is 54%. Our operating expense for that year was 2.7 million. That's a per capita of $58. We spend $58 for every person who lives in Palm Springs. That is a wonderful number. If you look at this, this chart on the screen, you can see that other libraries are spending all over, it's all over the place. And that's something I want to point out, too. These numbers are kind of all over the place for every different category. There's, Cerritos skews the numbers, their operating expense is $5.7 million, which means they're spending $115 per person, and that really skews the average.
Look at Rancho Mirage, I mean, theirs is a...
Rancho Mirage has, their population is very low.
They spend a lot of money.
And they spend about what we spend, it's pretty close, and so their per capita is very high.
It's interesting, the reach, the draw of a beautiful building.
Mm-hmm.
They get, they get twice as many people as borrowers than, as they have population.
True.
And it's just the building that does it.
Correct. And if you've seen the Cerritos library, fabulous library, fabul, and you'll see their, their door count, unbelievable.
Not that you happen to know this, but a side question would be, if Cerritos, do they have any kind of special funding source? Do they have a property tax or something that...
I don't know that, that's a good question.
I mean, seeing that number, I would wonder if they're, there's got to be a way they're raising that amount of money, right? 5.7 million, so do they have an assessment, or do they have, you know, a library property tax?
No, no, Julie mentioned that they have a special event venue, too, and so you'll see in their door count, it's 2.7 million people came through their doors. So they're attending events. And so this slide shows our print material purchases. This is, we spend this on books and magazines. This is just our books and magazine purchasing, and we spend about 5% of our budget on books and magazines. We do not include DVDs and media, audio, and visual items in this category. This is just our book items. And the average is 4.92, we're right in the average. We're, we're doing a great job, I think, on our spending. Our staffing costs are right in the average. They seem high for the total of the budget, but that's the way, that's the trend, and if you look, Cerritos is spending 86% of their entire budget on staff.
Sure.
That is high. Our operating hours, we have the Wellwood to thank us for our high operating hours to combine with our, our main library hours. We, our cost per hour is $400 an hour. That's based on our total operating expenditure. The average is $665 an hour, so we're under, under, on that, thanks to Wellwood. So that missed, that, not missed, it skews our number, we're skewed on that one compared to other libraries. Our full-time equivalent, that means if you take our entire staff of 18 and you divide our, our hours that we work and make it into a 40-hour work week, our full-time equivalent is 14, and our per 1,000 population, we have 0.3 employees per every 1,000 people that live in Palm Springs. The average is 0.34, so we're right along in the average. We would love to have more employees. Cerritos has 100 employees, 44 full-time equivalents, they have 100 employees.
Wow.
And those numbers can be seen on the, on the website. Our, our door count is, it's, it looks, if you take out Cerritos, we look pretty normal. Cerritos has 2.7 million visitors a year, and if you look at us compared to Lincoln, Glendora, Altadena, we're high, way higher than Altadena, Beaumont, we have, I think we have a pretty good door count. And if you look at Rancho Mirage's door count that year, they had 263,000 visitors, we had 256,000. So I feel very proud that our number is comparable to Rancho Mirage's. Our circulation, we are doing fabulous on our circulation. We, that year, we checked out 464,000 items. It's 9.7 items per person. So imagine if everybody who lives in Palm Springs came to the library, they checked out 10 items in a year, that's almost one a month, so that's a very good average for our, size of our library. The turnover, that means that if you took our collection, which is about 103,000 items, and you divide it by circ, it turns over about five times a year. So every item, this is just an average, every item in the library circulates five times a year, and that's compared to the average of everyone else, including Cerritos, is a great average. Now Rancho Mirage has a very high circulation, too, so we have a lot of hard hitters in the community that love to read and check out library items. Our reference questions, we are eh, okay on that. We, we have 15,000 reference questions, it's a little lower than the average. Cerritos, again, had 67,000, so then if you just imagine that number's erased and look at the others, we're, we're on par, roughly. Glendora is very heavy on the reference questions. Rancho Mirage has a lot of reference questions. And we truly track only reference questions. We do not track, where is the restroom? We, we track reference questions, so that's our number. Our internet use, we are the ones right on average, our, well, actually, our per 1,000 use. Our internet use is way over the average, so we, 80,000 people use our computers. You see that one, that one entry under Lincoln Public Library with a 1 in parentheses, it means that they don't track it. They don't track their internet number of uses. They do have the number of PCs, and they can calculate that. So we had a lot of public computer use. If you look at Cerritos, they had 141,000 people use their computers, they own 155 computers, we own 42. And so our per 1,000, we have 0.8 computers per 1,000 people, and that's the average, even including Cerritos and their 155 computers. Rancho Mirage didn't have nearly as many computer users as we did, so, but they have more per capita. The physical items that we held that year were 100, almost 104,000 items, it's two items per capita, and we're right along average. If you look at the other numbers, take out Cerritos and look at the rest, they're in the 90s, and even Rancho Mirage only had about 91,000 items that year. So I think we're doing a good job on holding our collection, keeping, keeping our collection relevant and healthy, because we don't want to be a library that has, where are we going to put, 267,000 items? Cerritos probably has a really wonderful collection, and they probably have an archive, or they have a reason for having 267,000 items. We don't have the space, we need to keep our collection healthy and fresh and up to date, and so we have 100,000 items, which is a good collection, I think. Program attendance, our program attendance is interesting. We're eh, kind of on average, our aver, the average is 14,000. Rancho Mirage had 40,000 people at the end of...
It's because of the space.
Writers Festival, they have their auditorium, they have great, great programs.
They have a good outside space for the Writers Festival, too.
Mm-hmm.
Yet Cerritos is fabulous, and it has half the amount of usage than Rancho Mirage.
Yeah, isn't that funny? Like, curious?
Yeah, you wonder how they count that. Everybody counts things a little differently.
Yeah.
Do you count Palm Springs Speaks?
We do not count Palm Springs Speaks in here, because it's, we consider that more of a Friends of the Library program, so we don't, and it's not in our building, so we don't count it. We count in, in-building programs, or, or have, Family Fun Fest is not inside the building, but it's on our property, so we don't count it. Yeah, it's a Friends, Friends and the Cultural Center program.
Would Wellwood also add to those numbers?
Wellwood's included in our statistics. The door count and the, the door count is included, total, total door count for all facilities.
And computer use.
And computer use, yes, and our hours, and our program attendance. The room's very small, though, at Wellwood, so it's, it only holds 40.
But the number of people that attended the dinnerware?
Mm-hmm.
No, that's not counted.
It would be counted, that would only be counted as a door count, and it's a Friends of the Library program as well.
So when they use our facilities and it's a program, we don't count it?
Right. Well, if you, lots of people use our library, and we don't count their attendance. We count it as door count.
Right.
But it's not our program.
Wow.
It's not our program, it's the Friends of the Library's program for modernism, that they are using our room, so it's not our program, they totally manage it, and so it's counted as their program.
But we promote it.
We listed it as, yeah, an event, but yeah, we don't actively promote it, they did. They did posters and things like that.
So that's a good, a good observation, I don't...
Yeah, I just don't know if it's, we're comparing apples to apples here.
We just consistently, we just consistently do that, and we don't, the Friends have a book club, we don't count their attendance in that. We do a book club at Mizele, and we don't count the attendance there, do we?
We do, because we facilitate it.
Oh, okay.
We don't facilitate the Friends book club, and we have it, so it's been totally run by the Friends since its very beginning. So again, it's, we count it if we facilitate or we're involved in it.
Do we count the genealogical society?
Uh, do we count the genealogy society? Yes, until recently, we, we survey and we manage that, when they're in our facility, because it is a library program open to anybody to attend, not just the genealogy, so it's a library program.
Okay. So these are things we could talk about, we just try to be consistent about what we, what we track and capture, so that if we never track the Friends programs, we never, we never do. We don't say, well, today we're going to do it, but then this one we don't, so.
Well, the door count addresses the actual public using our building, right?
Yeah, we do capture it in that way.
I, I, I kind of get the fact you don't count the program because it is a Friends program, but to me, if we didn't have the facility, or we didn't have the Friends, that program wouldn't occur.
Well, they have a, they had a tour offsite, and we wouldn't have captured that.
Maybe that's, to me, that might be, I mean, if it's using our facility and you guys are promoting it, why wouldn't we take credit for it? But, but that's okay, keep going.
Yeah, that's good.
I'm just going back to Rancho Mirage, when they have the Writers Festival, do they count that? Is it a library thing, or Friends of the Rancho Mirage?
I'm going to guess that they count it, based on the number that they're reporting.
Yeah.
That's the thing with any of these libraries that she's, you know, that report, we, we don't have a say in how they count, just like they don't have a say in how we count. So where we define certain things a certain way doesn't mean necessarily that they did, so a little bit of that is always going to be a little bit skewed, because we don't know what they count, and they don't know what we count.
And there's no guidance from the state library?
No.
They just say, be consistent.
Consistent with what?
With yourself, with yourself. From year to year, be consistent, and if you have any anomalies, you need to document why. And so we do that sometimes. If we change the way we count something, and our number skews high, we would say, oh, we did auto renewals, or we eliminated fines, or, and then something happens.
When you're standing with your hand raised to God and say, we had 400,000 people walk through our door.
Right.
You, you are capturing the actual public coming in our door, even if it's a Friends program.
Yeah, and just, yes, and just to tell you, some libraries don't count every single day, every single reference question. They do a, a point in time count, and they'll count once, once or twice a year, and multiply.
And extrapolate.
Yeah.
We used to do that. I remember doing that myself.
Yeah, so instead of them doing hash marks every day and then adding it up, they just check a couple of weeks in a year when they think that they're average.
They're doing it every day.
We do it every day. So in summary, our numbers are comparable to other libraries of similar jurisdictional size, population. So we, basically that. Cerritos skews just about everything, so it makes it, it makes our averages look odd because they're in the middle of that. Now, if we pulled that, pulled them out, because their numbers are so different from us, and then just ran a more generic average, I mean, it's just fuzzy math, you could say, oh, well, that makes it look better, or worse, or whatever, but I just wanted to present you, those libraries that are in that range, their operating expense, door count, and numbers of books are really, they really mess with our numbers. The per capita circulation and item turnover are high for us, so we're very proud of that. Our computer use is high. Now, something that's not in this presentation, but is in the statistics and maybe in your handout, is the youth programming, and I noticed compared to the other organizations, that our youth programming is low, and so it seems to me that they really make a priority of doing a lot of children's programs, and we have one children's librarian, and she's pretty limited.
That is our youth population compared to theirs.
That's the other thing.
That's what I was going to say.
Yeah, we are more of a senior organi, senior organization, a senior city.
Be careful.
We have fewer children, probably, than some of these suburbs of LA County. And then I, compared to 2012, if you look at that, that sheet, our numbers are pretty similar, pretty consistently within the range of all the others' organizations.
On the programs, what's the difference between column two?
What page are you on?
I'm on page four.
Okay.
Which one?
I think it's page...
Oh, what's the difference between a children's program and a school age program?
Children's program, I am a school age children.
Well, you have...
Because you have a preschool program, so that eliminates a whole group.
Exactly, and this is where we get frustrated with the state library, because we have to be the ones to decide what is a children's program and what is a school age program. And so we say, school age programs are those after-school DIY programs that we do, because we specifically say they're geared towards children in grades one through five. What other things? And then children's programs would be, do we count, that's summer reading, goes, summer reading and our Harry Potter parties, and Santa and things like that, would, do those go in children's? We remember? We don't know. We're consistently having to remember what we, what we do, but...
I'd have to go back and...
We have to just decide and stay, and stay consistent, because some, we've had some years where, one time, we put Harry Potter in...
We called children's family, that's why we do that.
Children, oh, I know.
So we do like the movie, we do our evening...
Use your microphone. Yeah. Our, our, our movie, our, that, we call them family programs.
Sure.
That's what Lisa was saying. So if you see in your, in your statistics here on this sheet, we list children's programs as family programs, so. We say if the whole family is most likely to attend, we call it a...
Sure, that makes sense.
We put it in the category of children's, but if it's something where we're doing a craft, or the DIY is really the specific example of the school age programs.
I, I think this is timely for a couple of reasons. First of all, as we prepare for the next phase of our planning, which is about programming, I think that committee would, would, it would be in our benefit to have an educator around this comparison to other communities, because I think someone might say, wow, you mean, I'm going to pick one.
Well, El Centro's beating us in children's programs.
Well, books held, for example, that's space, right? That we need to...
Oh, yeah.
If we think that we need a much larger book collection, and we want to, I'm making this up, circulate as much as a Rancho Mirage or a Cerritos, then how, how big is their collection, and how much space do they have? It leads into that kind of a discussion. I'm, I'm picking that out. It could be anything here, programs, you know, reference questions, internet use, computers is definitely something that, the more computers, the more people are going to come in, we know that, right?
Yeah, and, and for us, I was just looking at these children's programs, and I was like, we're below average, even without Cerritos, if you look at these small libraries, they're just...
I'm not surprised by that.
...laughing through some programs, and...
But the thing to remember, too, is that if you were to get statistics from Palm Springs Unified School District, they have been decreasing in the number of kids every year. So I think you have to go back to the communities and see, are they increasing in their children versus us? And think, I mean, you really have to then, if you really wanna get into it.
But we're still.
Statistics you can get.
Palm Springs is still bigger than Beaumont.
In terms of number of children in the Palm Springs Unified School District?
But a popular trend, as we all know, are young adult collections and young adult space in libraries. Are we growing young adult population, I don't know, but that would be a question I'd wanna have answered as we look at this because that's such a specialized area now in librarianship that we wanna make sure we don't overlook that, right?
Well, the other thing to think about, too, about Palm Springs Unified School District is that it's not just Palm Springs. It's Cathedral City, Desert House Springs, Rancho Mirage and Thousand Palms. And so Palm Springs proper may, those local schools may be seeing decreases when Cathedral City's bursting at the seams. Cathedral City needs to be doing the, the programming for children. We're, we are doing a lot of adult programming, but then we hit that capacity where we only have the one room, we only have the one parking lot. And so, and we only have the one person.
That feeds into if we want more, we've got to plan for more, we've got to raise money for more, I mean, yeah.
But your young adult programs are above the average.
Which is great.
I think, I think, I think these numbers are great, but they, I think, and also they need to tell a story. And, and there's parts of this that I think a programming committee is going to want to get more in-depth with. And like, for example, we did mention that the, the computers were large, more numerous than other locations. But then going to my original memo, the, the number of computer sessions is trending down over the last couple of years, so, you know.
And I see that, just watching the room.
When you put it into an analysis, it takes numbers from one source, it takes numbers from another source. Because otherwise, this committee is gonna be sitting with a bunch of papers that really are gonna be floating all over the place. And you might wanna, you know, if a consultant is going to do all that work for you to integrate all these numbers, that's great, too. The other question that I'd have, too, is that on page three, where we're looking at total circulation, which is higher than the benchmark average, I would wanna know what the difference is between print materials and non-print materials. So, because I think the trend for our library has been increases in circulation due to videos as opposed to print materials.
And historically, the DVDs circulate like crazy anyway, so this is what the report looks like that you download from the state. Oh, it's crazy.
Pretty.
And then all of the libraries and so.
Does a consultant actually go through these numbers and?
I hope they would, so that's the nice, that's what I was gonna say, too. I'm hopeful that our consultants, because they are professionals at this, this is, this is what they do.
Right.
That they will give us professional recommendations. They'll say, you know what, your circulation, your collection's strong, you've got the right number, or maybe your collection's so, so overburdened, you need to increase the size of your collection by ten percent, twenty percent, maybe you don't. But that's, that's what the consultants, I think, will do, and that's what Linda Demers did back in twenty twelve. She evaluated our shelf space, she measured shelves, counted shelves, she said, you've got all these empty shelves on the bottom, you could, you could push everything this direction and have twenty thousand square feet of, I'm making up a number.
No.
You have thousands of square feet of extra space for chairs. And you have this many chairs and you need this many chairs based on your traffic and your population and your usage.
Yeah.
So that's what they, that's what they do.
Yeah, well, you know, and the numbers, as I did in my memo, really do tend to tell a story and it's just a matter of digging through them.
Yeah. So I encourage you to go to that website, download this, this excellent Excel spreadsheet and then just start doing some sorting. And you could sort by registered users and you could sort by population, you could sort by budget and, and then do some comparisons. You could sort by county and, and see our neighbors.
And they have more than just one year's worth of data.
This is just one year, one year summary. They have the one-year summary and then they have the one-year, they have it broken down by expenses, there's a spreadsheet for expenses, there's a, or a spreadsheet for programming, and then there are several years back.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff and it's a little rabbit hole, you can go, go down and have a look.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeanne, that was very informative.
Is there anything that you want to do, do you wanna continue this next month or is there something specific you wanna talk about next month in our agenda prep? Or do you wanna let this lie where it is and wait for the consultants?
You mean the?
Like this item on the agenda, the Library Annual Reports and Questions, the memo, is there more that you wanna talk about with the memo?
Yeah, I, I mean, I personally would say if the discussion is gonna be led by you, is to start translating this to maybe, and I hate to say this, it sounds kind of negative, what, what are the limitations from keeping us to, you know, be better or higher in our per capita that you can, you see as a staff, you know, is it, is it resources? What kind of resources do you think that we need as we look ahead to plan for a new facility and a new budget, to start planting that seed, you know? But I think this planning committee is gonna need to know that, too, so maybe you just, you know, I don't wanna add more work to you.
I feel like the consultants would help us with that more, because they're gonna ask us the same thing.
It's great information.
I think it's good to get the numbers.
Do we want page eight of the packet, which is January twenty twenty statistics versus January twenty nineteen statistics, to reappear in the consent agenda each month?
I do.
This is a monthly document, cue to, is this right?
Right.
So let's keep that in the consent agenda, just in case.
Yeah, for now, I think.
Stay on top of that, yeah, okay, thank you.
And there are some things that we talked about, we're with, taking feedback from you about outreach and we are starting to gather more outreach data, but we want to be consistent with our reporting to the state and with ourselves. And so we're not going to start reporting it until, or doing, we wanna do the clean break July first. Because July first is the beginning of our fiscal year, we don't, we, we've started to practice compiling that data, but it wouldn't really, it would be kinda messed up to do it now. We wanna wait till the beginning of the fiscal year to have the cleaner reporting data so that we can start a full year and collect a full year, start doing outreach gathering. And we've decided that we're going to track the site and then the approximate number of children we saw. Because as an example, I went to three classrooms, I saw, my last thing, I went, I went to one school, I saw, I was in three classrooms, but it was five grades and I saw seventy kids. So that five-grade part really, it's not really fair to someone who goes to one school, goes to one assembly and sees three hundred children. So we think that that, the grades is not relevant, but the number of approximate children is relevant and the site is, is important. So I think that that's, we've decided that we think that's a great way to track that and be consistent. Because, you know, me jumping in eighteen classrooms and seeing, you know, a handful of kids is different than someone going to one assembly and only getting credit for one.
True.
Besides the schools, what are their outreach, are they doing now?
That's a good question, Ed and I are going to be presenters at the Rotary.
Correct.
Right, we're, I, I go, I do speaking engagements from time to time, Rotary Lions Club, I've been to Kiwanis, the Mizell Senior Center Widows or Widowers, so, was that what you said? Oh, Julie did go to the, the assisted living of the senior center. And, and so we do things like that, trying to, I feel like there's some other things I've done, but.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's different, sometimes Main Street, sometimes.
Yeah, I've spoken at Main Street, One PS, given presentations to different groups, gone to neighborhood organizations. I'm happy to speak at your neighborhood organization's annual meeting if anybody wants a presentation, I've got. We've spoken to teachers, we've gone into elementary schools and spoken to teachers about the services we have available. So we do a little bit of everything and we're happy to speak to your group.
All right, thank you. Moving into, as we discussed when we first started, this new board agenda layout, let's review and talk about it, what do you guys think?
Library staff report early, so it doesn't come at the end because it's important. And I feel like it should have the right place and not be sort of a tag on item.
I did get advice from the city clerk that there's, the section, item number two, I felt like it is humongously long. And he said that actually, most of that, the part that the agenda was available and posted, needs to be an affidavit at the end of the agenda. So there might be some tweaking in that manner, but for the most part, that was all the feedback I, and the public comment paragraph does need to be on there, so I think that's good.
It just needs to be on there, it doesn't need to be read.
Correct.
Yeah, I don't think it needs to be read.
Right.
Doesn't it?
I've never known it to be read.
It depends on how strictly you're going to enforce it. If you're, since we're not a, a board, you don't, we're not, it's not, we're not, we don't have the same function the city council or the planning commission has. And just so that you give people a time to speak, you probably have to tell them that they can only speak on items, that they can speak on anything, but you can't take action on anything that isn't on the agenda.
So if the president wants to read that, that's what the mayor tends to do.
We should maybe base that upon the size of our audience.
Yeah, if there's people sitting here.
Yeah.
Well, this is taped, so, I mean, there might be some consideration about for the people back at home.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll start reading that going forward. I, this is a very minute, crazy thing, but I've noticed, I've been trying to keep up with the motions, of course. And maybe one more line spaced there, because we had two that came up on the very first thing, and so I'm writing over myself.
I know, mine's a mess.
Yeah, so maybe give us a little bit more, maybe two, two lines there, too. So that you, we're, we're recording what you guys are recording in case you have a question, but otherwise.
And then I think your minutes are too long, I don't think you have to include everything that everybody says in the minutes. I think, I think it's typical that you just include actions that have been taken. Or if you have.
We would love to do that, we would love to condense it to more just an action report and then let the video stand.
Well, you know, we did that during the building committee and we did, okay, I mean, we, we went back to them a couple of times to review what the discussion, I recall. But I don't think anyone ran out of the room being upset that we weren't handing out detailed minutes. That would've killed us, since we're meeting every week, my gosh, but, you know, we did consult once or twice.
I'd just like to add on there, if there's anybody that asks for a request of information, that'd be noted in the minutes so that we can make sure we're not losing that information.
Scoot your microphone closer, I can't hear, I can't even hear what you're saying.
I'm sorry, my voice doesn't care.
Tell me, tell me what you want to get.
Maybe that we put somewhere in the minutes, information that's requested by members of the trustees, so that the request is not lost.
Okay.
But otherwise, if we can just go with what we, our motions, I'm good with that. Are you okay with my addition?
Yeah.
David, what do you think?
Well, I totally disagree, but I'm obviously gonna be in the minority on this one, so I, you know, my, my opinion about this is that the more details in it, the better. I do understand that there's, it puts a pressure on the staff to do this. The video is, is useful, but to scroll through a video of, you know, two hours in length to find particular pieces of information that are important is really cumbersome. Again, the last time we discussed this, my concern was that people who, who are, you know, in positions of authority, like our city council members who are trying to figure out what we're doing here, might not have the time to scroll through a, a video and probably would like to know what we're thinking as opposed to just what we're acting on. So I, I'm sure there must be some kind of.
Middle ground?
Middle ground, I don't know, but to simply base it on actions, I think would be pretty sparse.
Could we, could we consult with other commissions' reports to find out what their general practices?
Their general practices are very slim, they're very different. I, we looked at Measure J, Measure J was one of the most simple minutes, completely, is no action taken. Trustee so-and-so gave a report, no action taken.
I, I just wonder, though, if, you know, because committees sometimes, you know, for example, if there were more detailed reports that had narratives to them that were attached to this so that people could glean the information from whatever else is in the record, then, like, for example, Measure J, there are documents, there are plans, there are probably a lot of information that speaks to what's being discussed that become part of the public record, whereas we don't typically do that here.
I'll tell you that in my seven years of working at this library, no one has come and asked for documents in the board packets. They've never come to us and asked for our.
No, no, that wasn't my point, my point, my point was that the documents could speak to what we're discussing. So in Measure J, they might actually speak to what's being discussed as opposed to what we usually do here. For example, your presentation about the numbers, yes, they're, the numbers do have some information, but there's no narrative attached to the numbers. So what we do is we lose the narrative behind those numbers. And what happens is, is a consultant or somebody else actually has to start from scratch to figure out what those numbers mean.
But there is a video of my presentation.
Right.
And I'm adding the, well, it doesn't, it doesn't answer your, or speak to what you're saying, but I am adding, just so you all know, I'm adding the, the report into our board packet archive. So the, the updated document and all of the updated documents that you got today are gonna go into our binder and then the slideshow will go into the binder, too.
I think what would have helped, it would have been if the city council action or at least the staff report was in our packet since that had happened in between this meeting and the last meeting. It would've given people an understanding of what had gone on. That, so I agree with you that when there are documents like that, they should be in the packet so that if somebody says they gave a report on this and this is what they're gonna ask for.
Well, the document that you had today that we didn't have, that would've been nice to put in this agenda.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know the title of that.
Which?
It's the master, part master plan proposal.
It was the plan that went to city council.
Right.
And I only brought one piece of it because the rest had, action had been taken on it, but I had also thought it had been sent out to people.
Well, it was, it's part of the city council packet and then they pulled it anyway, so it's not an accurate document at this point.
But it still would've been good, it concerns this group, it was something we asked to have done. So something like that, I think, should go in the, in the board packet.
And in that case, it would make it easier to minimize your, your minutes because it's, you know, you could, you could actually in the minutes refer to the handout even.
So when you and.
So we do it on the front end or the back end, I guess it doesn't matter.
Yeah, I was just thinking that.
When you and Ed do the agenda, think about things like that that you wanna.
So what, what I'm hearing is that if we're going to reduce the minutes, if we add some sort of narrative to each item, whether it be a paragraph or whatever, that at least records what we're set out to do with that particular item, we could try that and see if that.
Front load it.
You know, takes the place. So whenever any of the committees or subcommittees or any of us put something on the agenda as well, we need to be prepared to, to write a narrative for staff to include it, is that what I'm hearing?
Well, that's not exactly what I'm saying, what I'm, what I'm actually saying, because that's the agenda, we're, we're still talking about the minutes. So the minutes really should reflect what's actually discussed. And if, to the extent that there are things that are handed out that are part of, you know, with handouts with the agenda, they could be referenced simply as that in the minutes and that would actually reduce the amount of time that's actually spent writing the minutes.
Let's consult with the city. Let's consult with the city clerk about it, or whoever you think would be appropriate.
They say they could be simple. They just say you need action, no action. Their minutes, the city council minutes, are entirely brief as well. They just say motion by this person, second by this person, passed, and that's all that their minutes are.
It might be of some value to share examples that you and I looked at with the trustees, so that they can see how we...
And then, looking at other commissions, the planning commissions' minutes are very long and detailed. They're more of a, almost like a transcript of, like a play-by-play.
As they should be. It has to be, because items are mainly their conditions on approvals.
Or, it's the happy medium that on certain items, we would take more detailed minutes than others, right? You know, do we identify what those items are, so that when we're discussing them, that we do record more detailed minutes around actionable items, or, you know, I don't know. Is that, is that another option?
Sure.
Because I have been organized where that happens as well. You know, if, discussion around the minutes, for example, is not detailed, it's just we have a discussion, versus discussions that we had around your presentation tonight, might be things that we might want to have minutes that reflect that discussion, in addition to your narrative, right?
Sure.
Okay. How do we determine that?
Guess we could try maybe a happy medium next time and see what, how it looks.
Yeah. Let's go to try, so, could we say that detailed minutes should be reflected on item, on agenda items seven and eight, because those are where we do have discussion of possible action items, and we want information?
That's basically what our minutes are, anyway, honestly.
So...
But, yeah. And then the other stuff, honestly, I put my, my staff report, I put the Friends report and my staff report in there because I'm hoping that someone will read it and learn about events and things that we're doing.
Yeah, I think that's right.
It's like a promotional item.
I agree with you, but, you know, if we're going to try to minimize this, there's lots of stuff that you could include in the packet for the Friends that they've produced that could take the place of that, right?
Yeah, let's do it.
Same thing with the, both the Foundation and the Friends, they should submit a written report that goes into the minutes. That right there would help you guys from, from writing anything about both those organizations, right?
Right.
So, you know, maybe going forward, we inform them that we're expecting at least a written report from them to be submitted, whether they're here or not, by the way.
I could even do mine as a written report.
It can all be in the consent agenda.
It is there. We capture those kinds of things. It's the things we're discussing right now that we don't know ahead of time what decisions we're going to make that I think do warrant some sort of detailed minutes, in my opinion. That's my opinion, guys, so, let's try it.
And I don't know if you need a motion or anything.
Well, we have done here, do we want to have a motion to accept this new board agenda layout? And we'll come back and discuss after the next meeting, the, how the minutes are handled. So, do we want to...
I move that we do.
I'm sorry.
I move that we approve this board agenda layout.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I am. Kudos to the people who worked on it. Thank you so much.
Yeah. Okay.
I have one last...
You got your hatch already? Because the next item, we got one more item.
You have anything else? I'm sorry.
Sorry. If you need to go, go, but we may need a quorum for this one.
You got three. Three's a quorum.
Okay. So, this is the, the library trustees, Lord of the Board, I'm sorry, the trust fund spending request, excuse me. And this was a meeting of the finance committee, so I'm looking at the treasurer, would you like to talk about this, or, or you want Jeanne to talk, present it to us?
Yeah, I think Jeanne is probably good to do this one.
So, as you guys know, every year, the finance committee meets with staff to determine the request from the trust fund for the next fiscal year. So, what you have before us in this attachment is, in fact, the request putting forth for next year. I will remind you that our bylaws were amended, or did I, am I making that up again?
It's page 15.
That things drop off of the, after they're funded, or they...
Oh, it's not, it's, it doesn't even, I don't even know if that, I don't think it's part of your bylaws, but it's just general understanding that when a project's done at the end of the fiscal year, the money goes back.
It drops off. If there's money left over, it goes back in the trust fund, is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah. We would never drag those things on.
So, talk to us about this request, and we can vote.
Okay. So, Treasurer Kelly and President McBride and I met, and we talked about library trust fund spending. The city, the city operating budget is on a two-year budget, so there's really nothing changing on the library budget at this time. So, we made a recommendation, basically that we save the trust fund mostly, except for spending, we've eliminated several things, but spending money on $10,000 for eBooks, the annual CPLA membership, and then I left it open for you to discuss if you wanted to spend money on a capital campaign, or if you wanted to wait, which you could do that at any time. We do have the current capital campaign, the $25,000 that we are actively spending, and think projects are happening a little at a time. And one of the things that you have is this card, that was one of the products of the, the awareness campaign. We had bus, sides of buses and bus placement, and bus stop placement, and radio ads, and digital ads, and so on and so forth. So, that was our proposal. We normally do $10,000 in nonfiction books, which comes from the Croppitzer Trust. However, the Croppitzer Trust has an earmark that says it could either be for nonfiction, adult nonfiction books in English, or for a quiet study room. And so, we thought maybe we'll just hold off for a year on that money, because maybe someday we'll be able to spend it on a portion of the renovated library. So, that's, that's our request.
Okay. So, do we have any questions from trustees about these line items and how this money's being used? Yes, ma'am?
The only question I have is, are there requests on the capital campaign? Because it comes with a question mark, but I don't know.
It's up to you.
No, you've started it, so I want to know what you need to keep it going in terms of an awareness campaign.
So, we started the $25,000 PR campaign. That was just an awareness campaign. This is actually more of a capital campaign fundraising component.
With the Foundation or the Friends.
Right. So, you did not approve that you wanted to, I think we were just waiting, waiting for a proposal.
We were waiting for the report tonight from the Foundation, and clearly, we've sent them back to come back, so this item will just continue.
Right. And the awareness campaign was just created to be a foundation, so that when you were going out to the community, whomever it was, to talk about it, that that wouldn't be the first time that we're asking for money, that we had, already had a conversation with them about building awareness. So, that wasn't meant to continue necessarily.
So, theoretically, we can drop the capital campaign light item, and as we see at the bottom here, when they come back with a request, if we approve, we just add it back, or do you want to keep it there as a placeholder?
Keep it there and say it's for Children May meeting.
Well, absolutely. And, and again, with unexpected items or, or new project ideas or whatnot, they can, I think we should be able to bring those to you at any time.
Sure.
But I felt, in my own personal opinion, I feel like there's some momentum, and I feel like now's the time to wait and, and see, wait and save our money and see if we can spend it on, on the big deal.
Yeah. Agreed.
Do you need a motion?
So, I move that we approve the fiscal year 2021 spending requests as presented in this document.
Thank you.
Which is totaling $10,250.
Okay. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. And I'm going to detail it in the minutes, for sure, because I always struggle to find them. What do we approve?
David's laughing.
That's an action.
All right. So, do we have any other comments from trustees, staff, or any future agenda items we need to add back on here? We know that we're going to be adding the, revisiting the library foundation in May. Is there anything else?
We should have an update and, on the, on work with library strategies. That should be included now in every, in every meeting.
What's next with that, that committee?
Yeah. And also, I don't know if Wellwood ever just kind of just dropped off of this agenda list, but maybe it should be put back on, because it would have been nice to know what's going on with Wellwood.
I actually think Wellwood and the Frey Building should both go back on. They did an announcement, may I speak on that?
Yes, please.
They did an announcement at city council to tell the public that they were going to be taking down the trees. So, the public wasn't upset about the trees coming down, and they said they were going forward with construction.
Good.
So, that's as much as I know, but they did slides on what the new courtyard would look like, and said that it would be happening soon, so...
And those were things that you've already seen, I believe, in your, the patio layout. So, I felt, personally, I felt like there was no action to report or anything.
No limitation to the opening.
The Frey Building, they asked us to hold back on that, not to withdraw the requests that we had to do it, but to hold back until we got some sense of whether it's a strategic plan for the part that was building in a space they wanted to keep, or do something else.
And could I just revise my ask? Because I was asking for putting Wellwood back in here, but I think it's probably appropriate in 7B, which is the building committee report update, so we just have to remember to talk about it there. I think that's fine.
Oh, yeah, because I think that we thought this building committee was that...
The building committee for the strategic plan or something.
Yeah, thank you. I am so sorry. That was the building committee.
Right, right.
Yeah.
And there should be a separate, a separate for the building committee for the strategic plan.
Yeah.
So, we need that.
Okay. We can make some separate...
So, yeah, I think we need to talk about the...
7B, one, two, three.
Just say building committee, new library.[1760.83]